I'd like to call to order the town of Atherton City Council meeting for December 8th to order. We start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Speaker, can I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember DeGoyea.
Yes.
Councilmember Dobbie.
Here.
Councilwoman Whitmer.
Here.
Vice Mayor, please.
Here.
Mayor Look.
So, before we get into the main agenda, I'd like to just make a little brief announcement. It is, with sadness and a great sense of loss for all of Atherton, that one of Atherton's longtime residents and the Chair of our Planning Commission, Herm Christiansen, passed away suddenly last week on December 9th. He had just chaired the December 4th Planning Commission meeting with vigor and good health and good debate. I watched the video of it today, and it was very touching because of all of his insightful comments that he had at that meeting. And then, he was also at our new Councilmember, Rick DeGoyea, swearing in event that same evening. So, it's a great sadness that we've lost him. A celebration of Herm's life is going to take place in January. He will be missed, and so, in honor of him, if I could just ask everyone to take 10 seconds of a moment of silence, and we'll just take 10 seconds. So first off, on our agenda is a proclamation, which is quite fun, and I'm so thrilled to be able to do this as my last mere oral duty of 2013. I'm gonna, it's a proclamation for our Menlo Atherton Viking Pop Warner Cheerleaders, and I know a little bit about cheerleading, because when I was in the 9th grade in Cincinnati, I was a cheerleader, and my boyfriend was captain of the football team and the basketball team. And I still know his name, and my husband is so jealous. I'm gonna go down.
You're not over that gap?
Careful, it's okay. Oh, well, I can do cartwheels if you want, or, you know, flying eagle jumps. Come on up, gals. This is so much fun. This is one of my great pleasures of being mayor, is you get to do these little proclamations. So, you know, you guys can be mayor too. Being a cheerleader is a lot of athleticism, a lot of spirit, but it takes a lot of leadership. And, you know, and you can inspire your team onto greatness, and you can get the fans all excited, right? And that's what you do as a cheerleader. So, we have a proclamation, and it looks like this, and I'm gonna read. There's a lot of whereas's, it's very official. It says, "Whereas, the town council would like to recognize the Menlo Atherton Viking Pop Warner Cheerleaders and the MA Viking Cheerleaders Squad completed in the Nationals in Orlando, Florida. And the Menlo Atherton Viking Cheerleaders consist of 13 girls on the Pee Wee Squad, ages ranging from 9 to 12. And those individuals include," now, I cannot pronounce everyone's name, because does, would their coach like to read? Would you like to come up and read all the names?
I don't think you do the last names.
Oh, see, that's what I was having problems with. So I just wanted to make sure that we got them through. It's all down here.
Yes, we have Alejandra, we have Annalisa, Annie, we have Ashley, who's here tonight, we have Sierra, we have Dynasty, we have Elenoa, we have Emma, Gabby, Bella, Kayla, Princess Tuesday, Tatiana, and Zaria.
Terrific, thank you. Okay, now, I'm not finished with my whereas's, okay? "Whereas, the Menlo Atherton Viking Cheerleaders were led to the Nationals by coaches Regina Merso and Christina Lietien and cheer advisor Lisa Fowler." Are you here?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. And so, "Whereas, the Menlo Atherton Viking Cheerleaders traveled to Orlando, Florida, and competed in the Nationals where they held their own against a very tough competition." Now, therefore, I, by the virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the town of Atherton, do hereby congratulate the Menlo Atherton Viking Cheerleaders for their hard work and dedication. Congratulations, gals. Do you have a cheer that you could do that you know together? That, because I think we've got two age groups here, right? No, they're all age, okay, good.
So, hey Vikings, how do you feel?
We feel good. Totally good. We feel good. Totally good. T-I-K-I-N-G-S feels good. Yeah.
Yay! So much, and you all look so beautiful in your purple and gold. Wasn't that fun?
That was great. I didn't know that you were cheering.
Well, you were an Eagle Scout, and I'm a cheerleader. The yin and the yang.
You can wear your uniform. I was on my horse, got me.
You wouldn't, no.
Is that the next meeting? Put that on the agenda.
Well, okay. So, now, the next on our agenda is, it says here, "Message from the outgoing mayor," and that would be me. So, I, gosh, this last year has just flown by for me. It's been a wonderful year. We've accomplished so many important projects as a team, as a council, as a town staff, and we've laid the groundwork for so many more important projects that it's just hard for me to choose, say, the top five. You know, David Letterman has his top 10. I tried to focus on the top five. And in thinking about it, transparency through technology seemed to come up to the very top, because everybody wants a transparent government. They want transparency. And so, that's the top of my list, and it's only going to get better if you stay and hear the presentation by Nate in a little bit, open.gov. This year, our city manager successfully launched a new user-friendly website, which is not only updated literally on a daily, maybe hourly basis, with real-time information. It's interactive, and at your fingertips, you can access information, videos of all the meetings, you can send messages to department heads about issues that you have, and along with this communication that's provided on the website, residents are given information on a weekly basis through the push email system that I have been working towards since I ran for council in 2008, and, you know, to get the information out to people in their email. Unfortunately, our email database has grown quite a bit because of the good years that people have volunteered their emails to the staff. So, you get information on a real-time basis. Our city manager and city clerk and department heads put together important information that you need to understand in order to know what's going on in your town. We've also used technology tools such as digitizing and archiving our plans and permits that allow us to better track and access information that's valuable to our residents. And from all the residents that I've talked to over the past year, receiving all this information has made a big difference in how they feel about their government. They feel that it's transparent, that they know what we're doing. Number two on my list is financial end. There are very positive things I'd like to report on. We've had, the first is the successful negotiations with our, and contract negotiations with our represented and unrepresented employees, which has resulted in immediate and long-term savings. This is huge, and it could not have happened without the leadership and guidance of our city manager and chief of police and other department heads, along with the teamwork of our council. Our council worked together in a unanimous decision collectively and collaboratively to, to the successful negotiations of these contracts. It means a lot. Secondly, we've achieved successful audit, and our budget for the first time in many years shows positive numbers, which will be needed for our future infrastructure repairs to keep our town safe and strong. We have a five-year budget forecast that provides a roadmap for managing our finances. Thank you, Finance Director and staff, and again, our team of council members who pushed that through. And because of the positive bottom line, our council again came together as a team to agree unanimously to use some of those extra funds to pay down our other post-employment benefit liability, known as OPEB, and to pay off the town's pension side funds in the amount of $2 million for the OPEB and $764,000 for the side fund. Now, by doing this, we have reduced our future unfunded liabilities and put our town on firmer financial footing. This was a group effort. Certain councilmembers led the charge, but the finance committee was part of it, the volunteers, and so, that really worked to our benefit, seeing that vision and taking action on it. And in November, our residents once again stepped up and passed our critical parcel tax by more than the two-thirds majority that is required. This support by our residents ensures that 18% of our annual budget is funded by the parcel tax, which amounts to about $1,008 annually, with 50% of that going to pay for our police protection purposes and 40% to public works projects. Public works projects such as repairing our Marsh Road channel, the annual cape and seal of our roads to keep them in good condition, to enhance maintenance services for our park and our streets and our street landscaping so that our visibility is better in safety of our cars and travel. So, thank you all, residents, for supporting this parcel tax, and thank all of the volunteers, the many volunteers who helped the campaign to pass the parcel tax. Number three on my list is our high-speed rail victories. Now, I can't take a lot of credit for this, although throughout the years, we did make some financial contributions to the cause for the lawsuits, but it's been our tireless volunteers of our rail committee, people like Paul Jones, Jack Ringham, Jim Janes, Greg Conlin, Rosemary, Scott, Jerry Carlson, Carrie Weese, Julie Quinlan, and our road warrior, William Grimley. I should say our road and air warrior, because he has traveled back and forth to Washington, DC, and to Sacramento many times, speaking to the legislators about the illegality of the financial model of the high-speed rail authorities plan. And in November, the ruling from Judge Kenny came down, very good news. I'm going to quote the judge, this ruling said, "That the High-Speed Rail Authority abused its discretion by approving a funding plan that did not comply with the requirements of the law." So, as the little town of Atherton that could, we did, and for now, it looks like we may have something to celebrate, because it looks like high-speed rail is being derailed for the immediate time being. And thank you all for your dedication. So, number four is our master plans throughout Atherton. This past year could become known as the Year of the Master Plans for the Town of Atherton. Staff is going like this, like, oh my gosh. Gordon Seaver's not here, because he was, my goodness. So, "We embarked on several master planning projects to study and evaluate the highest and best uses of resources and how to make our town safer." This is the groundwork that has been laid, and will continue to be worked on over the next year and years. Just to highlight them, there is the Bike Pedestrian Master Plan, that's the first ever that Atherton has ever undertaken. This is to create safe routes for our children and adults to traverse through our beautiful town. Councilmember Whitmer is on the Stakeholders Advisory Group as the council liaison, and there was a survey put out, resident input, and so, that is going along, and results will be unfolded in 2014. There's a Drainage Master Plan to address our drainage infrastructure and water runoff issues. The Park Master Use Plan to analyze all the various and competing uses in the park to better understand the needs of our residents and all the others who use the park. That is in process. And the Civic Center Master Site Plan to look at how our town wants to create a town center, a place for our future, a place to meet and greet each other while conducting the business of running our town, to create a there, there. This has come after the vote in 2012 by residents wanting to focus on the civic center as a whole, including all of Atherton's public facilities. And so, the Civic Center Advisory Committee embarked upon a very comprehensive and thoughtful plant master planning process. This process has taken the better part of the year, and last week on December 11, the eighth and final public workshop was held at Jennings Pavilion. The resident outreach and involvement has been extensive and rewarding. The next phase of this project will be the master plan submitted to council in the first quarter of 2014. An ad hoc subcommittee has been formed to work with the consultants to hone and vet the cost analysis and make sure that what's presented to council is reasonable and within our range. So, the last on my five list, top five list is, but it's certainly not the least, is the accomplishment of our most recent councilmember election, special election in November. This was not a regularly scheduled election. It was an election that was created by the untimely and unexpected resignation of one of our most valued councilmembers, Jerry Carlson, in July of this year, leading us with a four-member council. When the council could not decide upon appointing someone, there were seven or nine candidates, Rick DeGoyea stood up and said, "You know, if you can't appoint, then I want to let you know I'm going to run." Well, run he did. He walked precincts, talked to residents, held over 20 candidate events, and was elected by an overwhelming majority. So, we now have our fifth councilmember and to fill out our five-member council and to join our team, and it's a, it's a great honor, because his accomplishments in his professional life, he brings fresh perspectives and vision, as well as many, many contacts from Silicon Valley. So, in summary, as a town, we ask a lot from our residents. We have been asking a lot, we're going to ask a lot. We're going to ask them to pay attention, to read the emails, to understand what's going on, to be involved, to help make decisions for the good of Atherton, and to help financially, because the Civic Center is going to require a capital campaign in order to have that dream become a reality, a new police department, a new administration office. But I know that our residents are up to the task. They're capable, knowledgeable, talented, generous, and by far and away, they truly love Atherton. It's a great place to live. Thank you, fellow councilmembers, for this past year, for your collegiality. Thank you, staff. Thank you, residents. That's all I have to say. So, I have one more thing that we have, we get to do. We're going to now, is the time that we make the selection of a new mayor and vice mayor. And as the current mayor, I'm going to open the nominations and nominate our current vice mayor, Carrie Weese, to be mayor for the coming year. Carrie has proven himself this past year, meeting the challenges of filling the shoes of Jerry Carlson as vice mayor, and he's serving on the rail committee, which Jerry Carlson did, the Peninsula Consortium of Cities, which Jerry Carlson did, the Calamod Committee Group, and he's been visible in the region as well, just like Mr. Carlson did. Carrie is the only councilmember, besides myself, who has attended the League of Cities New Council and New Mayor's Boot Camp in Sacramento, where you are trained on how to conduct yourself as a councilmember, the ethics class, and so, on how to be an effective councilmember. So, I nominate Vice Mayor Carrie Weese to be mayor, and I'm going to call for a second to my motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Carrie.
We have a second with Councilmember Whitmer. Any other discussion? May I call for the vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any no's? Unanimous. Okay. You haven't been sworn in yet, so, easy up. We're going to nominate a vice mayor, and so, I'm going to open the nominations for vice mayor, and I would like to nominate Rick DeGoyea.
I would like to nominate Bill Whitmer.
We have two motions on the floor. Do I have a second to the first nomination for Rick DeGoyea?
I will second to go ahead.
Do we have a second for the nomination of Councilmember Whitmer?
I will always nominate myself.
Okay. So, we'll take a vote for the first nomination first. Will all those in favor to elect Councilmember DeGoyea as vice mayor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All those say no?
I will vote for Rick.
Okay. Any other? And Councilmember Dobbie, are you going to vote?
I voted aye.
Okay. So, we have, that motion passes four to one, so, that supersedes the second motion.
Yep.
Vice Mayor DeGoyea, okay. And your office. Is it hot in here? I just thought I was getting a shirt.
Don't forget your name, Carrie.
Let me just get out of the way.
Raise your hand. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Carrie Brezzi-Goyea.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of California.
And of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I bear true faith and allegiance.
That I bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of California.
And of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of obdation.
Or purpose of obdation.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Okay. So, where are we going? You guys, you want to just, and maybe we can move Mr. Whitmer down there, and you guys take places.
This is my seat. This is my seat. Well, take your chair.
No, well, take your chair and move down there.
Walk, move to chairs. Move from under the seat. I know, I can move my chair over there, because it's. I'll get the chairs. That's right. That's the next one. You didn't say why, it would be, that's why.
We're almost settled. Well, I want to take this first opportunity to say a few things, and it's difficult to say a lot based on what Mayor Lewis, outgoing Mayor Lewis, said very clearly. I want to start by thanking Mayor Lewis for her past year in representing the town of Atherton. I was personally very proud to be sitting next to you, working with my fellow councilmembers as well. Your representation of the town of Atherton goes beyond the time in service, the amount of hours you put in. I thought I was doing pretty good, but every time I turned around, you were leaving, and I was coming in briefly. So, I do have to say, it is, it was an honor working with you in the last 12 months, and I wish to continue to work with you and my fellow councilmembers over the next year. So, thank you. And saying such with your comments, we are going to be staying on course. I will keep my comments brief, and staying on course with everything that you heard, transparency is very important. Our police department, our capital improvements, reducing our long-term liabilities are all of deep concern to every member of the council up here, and we will continue on course. So, we will move on. So, we are going to the presentation and discussion of open.gov. City Manager.
I give it to Mayor members of the council. Robert's here this evening to introduce, and I believe we have Nate Levine from Open Gov.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. Before you today is a, we're going to have a presentation by open.gov. We, a staff was urged, open.gov, back in November, November 12 of this year, to do a presentation to the Finance Committee regarding open.gov's financial software. And at that Finance Committee, the Finance Committee was very, was on board, I guess, where they were very appreciative that that presentation was there, and they recommend that the presentation come before the council, for the council to look at and see the opportunities, again, financial transparency that we all look for in today's government. So, open.gov is a silicon-based company. It's a web-based application software that allows for financial transparency, transparency within government agencies' websites. So, we decided to bring Nate Levine here with open.gov to kind of show you what their software does. It's just an additional tool that will help provide our, our community an ability to look at our financial data to user-friendly. It's not going to take place of our budget or replace any of that, but it's just an additional tool to provide some more transparency among our community, among staff and others. So, without further ado, I'd like to pass it over to Nate Levine.
Thank you, Nate. Take this off.
Well, thank you, Robert, and thank you, council, and congratulations to your new mayor on the, on the position. Very excited to be here in front of you, presenting our software. So, as Robert said, I'm with Open Gov. I'm one of the founders of the company. We are a, as he said, a Mountain View-based software company, and we've built a web-based platform that helps governments and, and government agencies that are access analyzed and then share all of their financial data, both internally and then also with citizens and with members of the public. So, what you have in front of you on the screen is the Open Gov home. So what you have in front of you on the screen is the OpenGov homepage, it's at opengov.com. I'll go over here to our customers page, because this is where you can actually access all of the sites for the governments that we're working with. So if you see on this page, you can scroll down, we have the various governments, the cities, counties, school districts, special districts, and state agencies that we're working with. We're currently in 55 governments in 13 states, including the cities of Palo Alto, Menlo Park, and also the San Mateo County Transit Agency. So I'm going to go ahead and launch the city of Palo Alto's site, just to show you how this works. You can go click on it there, you could also go access this at paloalto openedgov.com, or you could go access this through the city of Palo Alto's homepage. So the city has put it on their budget page, they've also incorporated this into their budget document and their budgeting process, so they're actually co-publishing their budget document with their OpenGov site, and various governments are putting this in various places on their, on their webpage. So as I said, this is the city of Palo Alto's site. What you're looking at here is six years of the city's complete financial history. So if you look at the graph, you'll see we have four years of historical data from 2009 up to 2012, and then we have two years of budget data, the 13 budget year, and then of course, the 14 budget year. Right now, it's broken down by the departments, and we're looking at all the expenses. So I go ahead and hide this menu here, make that a little bigger, so we can look at it, and you'll see over on the right here that we have some of the departments across the government. You can look at utilities, for example, see how much the city's spending on their utilities department, public works, police, fire. So as you can see, you hover over an item, in the legend, dollar amounts pop out, you can see them right there in front of you. And the screen's scrunching a little bit, so I scroll back and forth here to get to everything, but, but it's all right there in front of you. You can open up this menu again, and you can break this down in different ways, so instead of looking at the departments, you could look at the different funds, see the big ones there, proprietary governmental. You could also look at the account types, in this case, the various expenses, could go click on that to drill into that category, and then if we go over here, you'll see, Nick, we now have all the expense categories across the city, salaries and benefits, utilities, contracting. Again, you see, we hover over it, the dollar amounts pop out. You could also drill down into one of these categories. So if I click on salaries and benefits, for example, we drill into that category, and now what we're looking at are the, the line item level details within that salaries and benefits category. Here we see regular salaries, we have benefits, retirement, paid leave, scroll down a little bit here and look at, kind of for spending on overtime, for example, and you could click on that. So I can click on overtime and pull up a six-year trend line of overtime spending across the entire government. You can see those dollar amounts. If we wanted to, we could then go back here, break this down by department, look at overtime spending by department. So as you can see, there's a lot of ways that you can slice this data, dice it, analyze it, to get, to get some very powerful visualizations. We also have a filter menu here that lets you select exactly the data you want to see. So if I go ahead and open this up, you'll notice there's, there's three columns here, funds, departments, and then of course, the account types. And you can go in here and select, I'm sorry, you can select any of the data that you want to see. So could open this up, and maybe we're interested in only the general fund expenses, we can click on that. We could, for example, pick the fire department and only look at fire department expenses, go ahead and select all of their expenses, close the filter, and now we have the fire department expenses out of the general fund, right now broken down by the divisions. Again, you can see the divisions in that fire department, we could drill down and look at the programs, or we could go back here, switch back to a view by the expense categories, and now we're looking at, again, fire department expenses by their categories. You can see salaries and benefits makes up the majority, as you'd expect, and you could also drill into something like supplies and materials, see how much they're spending on uniforms, on office supplies. So you can keep getting down into those details very easily, just a couple clicks. All that information's right there in front of you. Can look at different graph types, we have trend lines, if you'd rather see everything on top of each other, so you can compare them. We of course have pie charts, can look at the percentages, scroll back and see how they've changed historically. Also underneath every graph is a table, so you go ahead and click on that, or just scroll down, and you have all this data right here in tabular format to get right to the numbers. And all these tables and graphs you can export as well, so you can click here, download this as a spreadsheet, also as an image, save it out, drop it into a report PowerPoint or something like that. So that's, that's kind of an overview of, of the complete platform, how it works, and how the city of Palo Alto is using it. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about the platform as well.
First off, on the time, time trends, can you just go through a year and then see budget versus actual, and then see the individual forecasts of how they've either been met or not met? Can you do that?
Yes, you actually can. I can go ahead and pull up, I'll pull up the city of Springfield, Illinois, also on the platform. It's the capital of Illinois. You'll see that they have underneath their annual recording, their current year recording. This is something I believe that, that Atherton may be setting up as well. And what you see here is actually spending to the month instead of for the year. If you see the, the actual, 13, 14 actual numbers here, what this data point's representing is how much the city has spent up to the current month, and then this data point's representing how much the city budgeted to spend up to that month, and then of course, you get in past years, how much they had spent up to that month.
But can you have in past years what the budget was, where they spent, and then also what the mid-year forecast was, and whether or not, and what that variance is based on, on their total indicated costs and where they ended up?
Yes, you can. The city of Springfield chose to display it this way, but the platform is flexible, and you can choose to display that data kind of however you want. And if you do scroll down to the table here, in the, in the monthly or year-to-date presentation, well, it's over to the right here, the screen's cutting it off, but there's a variance column as well that show you the variance in budget.
So can the individual user customize it to what they're looking for, or is it only going to be what the town decides to set back?
It's what the town decides to put in, and then the individual user can choose what data they want to display through the platform, but we're only going to display ultimately the data that you're choosing.
But you can't put, you can do your own report, right? You can build your own reports.
Yes, yes.
So if we decided to go with this, how long would it take you to put Atherton on one of these?
Takes us about a week from when we get the data to get a site built, so that would be up to the finance department when they wanted to move forward with this, but from the point that they send us the data to get started building the site, we can have it back to you in seven days.
So on a continuing basis, the finance department would send you the information on a monthly basis, I suppose?
That's correct, that's how they want to do it. They can do quarterly, weekly, monthly.
Quarterly, monthly, and then you would be able to take that monthly data, update it, and get back within a day of...
Oh, certainly, yes, within, within an hour, on a, on a ongoing basis.
What about on...